It's all right. Welcome to the study session, May 28th, 2024, 6:00 PM at City Council Chambers, 111 East Maple. And so first on our agenda is Health and Animal Services. Mr. City Manager, how would you like to tee this one up?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think these departments are all ready to present. So as we go through the night, if you want to just call forward the next department, the directors will come forward and be happy to present. Before this one begins, if I may make one clarifying comment for the council's benefit, we've asked the departments to give you a pretty high-level overview of their departmental budgets and some of the primary issues that they both hope to address in this year, but also that they're facing. One additional thing that I did ask the departments to include was what would their budgets look like if we had to further reduce them? I know it's often a question from our community about, you know, should we look at doing some more belt tightening? So we want that to maybe give the council a little information on what that would look like. So I want to be clear that we're not asking the departments to further reduce their budget. The budget that's been submitted to you is the submitted budget and it's balanced, but we thought that might be some useful information for you and your deliberations, as well as the community, to help further educate and inform our community.
And if I can just jump on that, because that's an important point, I want to stress this to everyone. That is a question for philosophical purposes. We are not in any way asking the budgets to be cut by 10% or 20%, or any number that the department comes up with. This is certainly an exercise in kind of economic realities of what would that look like, what impact would it make. But in no way, and I cannot stress this enough, in no way does anybody need to be concerned about a budget that is more, any more reductions at this point. I don't see any, I don't think you see any, I don't think we see any on the horizon.
Correct.
But the question was put to us, hey, if you had to, what would you do? But I want to stress, that is not what this exercise is about tonight. It is not about cutting further. It is about just clarifying our budget. But if there were to be cuts, what would the directors recommend?
That's right.
But it is not, there is absolutely no way, I want to stress this again, no way that is going to happen under this scenario. So anyway, with that being said, thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Good evening. My name's Christina Heinen. I'm the Health and Animal Services Director for the City of Independence. Steve helped me get this teed up, and there we go. Tonight, I am happy to present the Health and Animal Services budget for this next fiscal year. Health and Animal Services is a rather small department. We have approximately 35 staff members sorted between the animal shelter side and the city hall side. Our mission is to protect, promote health and safety, and prevent disease and injury for the residents and visitors in our community through a variety of programs and services. This last year, we had some changes that we did to try to keep our budget as healthy as we possibly could. We joined a spay and neuter collaborative, which increased access to spay and neuter services, and helped us to get reimbursed through different grants and different programs. We got registered with Medicaid, Medicare, VFC, and VFA in order to provide vaccine access for our community. We began sharing a staff member with emergency preparedness to help us for coordination with the Medical Reserve Corps. We restarted the Social Service Summit to improve collaboration among Independence' agencies. And we began distribution of Narcan and condoms to combat the opioid epidemic and the increase in STIs that we are currently seeing in our community. So our strategic plan connection is with engaged community, a self-welcoming, a safe and welcoming community, a well-planned city, and a financially sustainable organization. We're working hard on that financially sustainable organization, doing our best to identify and capture that additional funding for our health department. This last year, our major accomplishments included, we took in almost 2,000 animals at the shelter. We had over 4,800 animal control calls. Our arch team released or canceled 703 emergency units from incidents. We kept our live release rate at 95.1%. I could go on and on. We had over 1,000 inspections for our environmental health teams, so out there at lodging establishments and restaurants. We increased our Facebook followers to try to improve communication and education. And our 176 arch transports ended up saving citizens over $166,000. As I stated, we have about 35 employees. Right now, you'll see this last year, we had 34.64 FTEs. This next year, the proposed budget has 34.49. What this actually hides is we added, you can see individuals for 4755, which is our grant programs, but individuals actually decreased on our shelter side under 4710, which is our Prop P funding. This strictly speaking, is just because the price for having staff, including all of their benefits, has continued to rise and continued to increase, but the amount of money has not continued to increase at that same rate. So we have fewer staff in that section. We were able to move one staff member over to 4705, which is our Recreation Health Fund side. But the most growth that we're able to sustain there is on the health side that's grant-funded. As I stated, our revenues remain flat, while our expenditures, especially the personnel costs, continue to rise. Our staff continue to work on new revenue sources. Vital records, we were able to get up and running this last week, which are birth certificates, death certificates being offered to the public. We continue to pursue a myriad of grants for different issues, both on the animal services side and the health side. We have vaccines that we're trying to get up and running in order to be able to bill insurance. And there's the spay neuter coalitions that we raise so we can be reimbursed more for providing those services to the public. Our package requests that were included in this year's budget include almost $10,000 for corundam beds. For those who don't know, those are the beds that are in shelter kennels in order to raise the animals off the floor. We had had the corinda beds that had essentially come with the shelter. They were over a decade old. As you can imagine, they had been chewed on by the dogs for years, had gotten to the point where we could no longer properly sanitize them. So we needed to replace those. We also asked for, and we're going to go ahead and purchase, about $8,500 in play equipment. We are very full at the shelter right now. And as you can imagine, the animals need some way to have the ability to relax and play and have that enrichment. That includes the ability to play out in the yards and have that extra bit of fun, besides just having a stuffed toy or a Kong. We work on all of those things. We're also including 1,500 to purchase uniform shirts and jackets for our grant-paid staff. Those sorts of items are actually usually not allowed to be purchased with grant funds. So our staff, when they go out to different events, they were looking for a way to look uniform and together and to be representing the city. So this is one small way for us to do that. However, as I'm sure you guys all know, there are quite a few budget constraints. We had hoped to be able to add an additional full-time vet tech to our staff, which we're not being able to do this year. We were hoping to also add an additional full-time animal services officer, which would bring the total to five. As you know, the animal control officers not only are responsible for the City of Independence, but also all of unincorporated Jackson County. They respond to all calls between normal business hours, and then on evenings and weekends, they rotate to respond to additional calls, emergency calls on weekends and after-hours. We would have loved to have added a fifth person in order to extend our normal business hours and be able to take on some weekend hours. However, that is just not possible with our budget. We also had hoped to add two additional animal care technicians. Right now, we have six animal care technicians. They are responsible for approximately 140 animals, 146 animals in the shelter each day on average. That works out right now with three to four animal care techs per day, because of course, we have to staff seven days a week, 365 days a year, which amounts to about 10 minutes per animal each day. So each day, all our animals get to interact about 10 minutes on average with an actual person before having to be back in their kennel. We were hoping to be able to increase that number, add some more members to our behavior team. However, that is just not possible. We are not in the general fund. We are under Prop P, the Recreation Health Fund, permit fees that we're able to collect, and adoption fees, those sorts of items, and along with grant funds. However, if we were to have to cut 10% of any of those budgets, we would need to be losing on the shelter side, we'd have to lose an animal control officer, and at least two animal care techs, which would bring us down to three officers and four animal care techs. And on some days, it would mean that we would only have one to two animal care techs there to care for all of the animals each day. On the city hall side, we have to assume that this wouldn't include any sort of grant funding that we would need to decrease, but instead, it would be our environmental technicians, our environmental investigators, those food inspectors who go out. We would have to lose a food inspector in order to make that 10%. I hate to end on a down note, but that is my presentation. Do you guys have any questions? I'd love to answer them.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Please proceed.
So looking at your health services, you're about 60% grant-funded. Is that a fair...
On the, on the health side, yes.
And grants are notoriously fickle when they change their areas of emphasis. What do you feel like the grant landscape is for the city?
So the majority of our staff, we're very thankful that the state has passed through grant funds. So our maternal-child health, our core funds, our FEPC, which is Public Health Emergency Preparedness, those sorts of funds are usually pretty stable. They're every year, we've been, we get them, they're pass-through funds. There are some additional funding sources that the state has made relatively stable that we're going to continue making sure we, we get and go after, including those accreditation grant funds. So we're pretty good there. I feel confident that with the majority of my grant-funded people, I can continue having grants for them. The only concern would be that it may not be a grant necessarily that they want to work on, that some of them, from time to time, have to go and work on another grant that maybe is not of their interest, but is what we have the funding to do. They're...I, I am thankful to have the grants we have. Our health side, I would always love to grow. On average, a municipality of our size would have about 60 people working on health issues. We, we do not have anywhere near that number, so.
So I'm sorry, you said 16?
Sixty, six-zero.
Okay.
Is what is anticipated and the norm across the country. So we are rather underfunded on that side.
And when you get a grant, does it cover the all-in costs for your teammates? So retirement, health benefits?
So it, it pays all of the benefits out. It includes the loggers.
Okay.
The one exception is the Combat Grant that we currently have, which only runs through the end of the year, and it will only pay 10% of benefits. But for the most part, we go after those grants that will allow us to pay all of the benefits, so that another grant doesn't have to pick up that slack.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Please.
Hi. Can you, I'm, I'm, I apologize for my ignorance. I'm, I'm sure I'm going to ask questions that are repeats, but can you go over exactly what Prop P pays for in your department? What are the restrictions? And, and talk to me a little bit about that.
Yeah. So Prop P was set up and passed so that we would get, we would cap out at 750,000 plus Consumer Price Index. So for this next year, I believe that's $921,000. So definitely above that 750,000 cap.
Right.
Because of Consumer Price Index. That 921,000 is enough to pay the staff, most of the staff, on what I would consider the shelter side. So not animal control and not some members of management, but the majority of the staff. It also is not enough to pay for food, vaccines, any of those sorts of supplies. Really don't fit under that. It is primarily, it pays for staff, and it's restricted, that is, to pay for the operation by the city for a no-kill shelter.
Okay. So it doesn't, so Prop P does not pay for any of the animal control side?
No.
Sorry. And then I guess my other question is, those, those employees that was, that are on your wish list, could some of that be taken care of with focusing on a more robust volunteers? Could, could, could some of that be helped with more volunteers?
So of course, if we had more volunteers, the issue, the issue truly becomes, if there's bad weather.
Right.
If there's holidays, you know, our volunteers are wonderful, and we have some volunteers that will come out, not quite 365 days a year, but almost, they are out there. The issue becomes ensuring that staff come, you know, when there's 16 inches of snow on the ground, my staff understand that they still have to get to the shelter somehow, that we, they are responsible for the feeding and caring of those animals. They have to get there. Volunteers, they, they don't come, and that's okay. I understand that. I don't want them to risk their life to come. However, we need someone to get there. The same comes of those animal services officers. When it's Christmas Day and someone has left their dog outside in negative 10-degree weather, they have to run those calls. And they do.
Thank you.
Anyone else have other further questions? Please proceed.
So Ms. Heinen, I have a number of questions, but I just want to say this, I'm going to say this at the beginning for all the directors here. Anything that I ask that sounds negative is not intended to sound that way. It's just, I'm trying to understand.
You have me nervous.
So I'm just, I'm just saying that, so I'll say it once, so I don't have to say it for everybody. So on, I'm looking at the number of, you know, employees.
Yes.
And you said 34.49, but the book says 35.08. So I was just trying to figure out what the difference was.
Well, there's a good chance the difference is that I added incorrectly. That is a really good chance.
All right. Well, I just was...
Melissa is, is nodding, and she's, I mean, that's why she has this job, not me, so.
I'll, I'll look at the system.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thanks. I just was trying to, to be clear. And then on, on page 111, on the animal shelter use tax page, so there's a, from this year's budget to next year's budget, there's additional professional services of 107,000 and other operating expenses of an additional about 81,000. I'm just wondering what those are.
So the 107,000 professional services is primarily our cleaning crew that comes in. We have a specialized cleaning crew that comes in 365 days a year. Some days, I will admit, they beat me to the shelter. They are there, ready to clean and sanitize all of those kennels. They get in there, they get the job done before our opening time, and then they, they move on to their next job.
And we didn't have that this last year?
We did. It's just it was in, in order to make the, the books balance perfectly, some items that were in 4705 got moved to 4710 in order to make sure that they balanced perfectly. That's all that is.
I see.
It was definitely there. It was just in a different budget account.
I see. Okay. All right. Um, let's see, what else did I have? In, in the health services on that page, is there any of the arch, is arch, any of arch in your budget, or is that all on fire? I'm trying to...
No.
Are we just trying to...
So the licensed clinical social workers are in 4755, because they're grant-funded.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And so, and then the community paramedic and the battalion chief, of course, are on the fire side.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I had it clear.
Yeah, not a problem.
All right. I think that's all I got.
Very good. Anyone else have other further questions? I just have one. ASPCA contacted me during the budget year in Jeff City, and they had $200,000 taken out of their budget midterm. Did it ever get added back in, or are you aware of that? I know that's not under your purview, but I thought you might be aware of it.
I was aware of it happening. I have not gotten an update about whether it got put back in or not.
I didn't either, and that's what I was wondering to do, if it, see if it got put back in. I was hoping it would, but, you know, they had a bit difficult year this year, so.
They did.
Here we are. All right, perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And next up, we've got Technology Services. Anything from you, Mr. City Manager, on this one?
No, sir.
Okay. I always want to give you the opportunity, or just give you the nod or whatever.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Jason Newkirk, IT Director. We're going to start off here with our mission. So our mission is to provide innovative technology solutions and support city departments in delivering quality services to the community. So basically, our job is to help make everybody run a little bit smoother and a little bit faster. We had three kind of major operational changes this year. We realigned our GIS and City Works staff to support a broader range of applications. Basically, what we did is we, we brought in a whole number of new applications that they're supporting, but a few of these are document management, cashiering, and utility billing. We also realigned how, how we were doing the public website and how we were doing system administration on that. So we partnered with our communications team, as well as a third-party vendor, to, to do that. So previously, we had done all of the hosting in-house, as well as all of the application development in-house. Now, communications team does the day-to-day content development. The outside contractor does the website hosting, and then we provide technical support for all of that. And then third, we integrated Utility Billing System Administrator into our department. So basically, we took a staff member that was in municipal services, brought them over to tech services for kind of centralized IT management, and then we added another staff member so that we didn't just have one person that knew how to use the utility billing system. All right. Action Plan Connection. So an engaged community. So even though we are an internal, facing an internal services department, we do touch the public through various communication platforms, such as the public website. We implemented phone system, public maps, online portals, customer service, communication platforms that we also implemented this year. As far as an innovative economy, we provide a various set of portals to, for businesses to interact with the city, applying for permits, renewing licenses as well. Safe and welcoming community, we work with police and fire on a regular basis to provide basic IT infrastructure support, financial stability. We promote standardization amongst all the departments for IT functions. So what this prevents is each department going and finding their own solution and basically purchasing a version of the same piece of software. Instead, we're, we're buying one piece of software and managing that centrally. We're also maturing the city's cybersecurity practices to control risks. And not only does this lower our insurance costs, but it also decreases the probability that we would have a costly cyber incident. And then High Performance Organization, this is really our bread and butter. This, this is what we do every day. We integrate key systems together to help improve efficiency. We improve departmental collaboration through shared systems, common communication platforms, and communication tools. And we create a culture of innovation by just showing people what's possible. And then we also have utilized GIS and City Works to develop data standards and deploy data analysis tools, which helps us make data-driven decisions. All right, on to our accomplishments. So we implemented a few communication tools this year, some of which I've already touched on, the new public website, new telephone system, then also a customer, utility customer service call center software. We also improved staff productivity by deploying mobile device management, implementing an e-fax solution. We migrated water distribution data to our central GIS database, and that's promoted sharing between the different departments, because there's more than just the water division that might need that information. We also deployed several City Works solutions, such as tracking vacant struck, vacant structures and special assessments. We partnered with IPL to implement the new rate structure this year. And we also expanded our data center capacity by 20%. On the security improvements, we deployed Password Manager, which helps promote stronger password practices within our employee population. We implemented automatic email encryption for sensitive data types. Basically, what that does is anytime someone's trying to email something that might get flagged as a sensitive, encryption's automatically implied to that. We also developed a program for identifying possible vulnerabilities and then quickly assessing those so that we can, can manage those, which resulted in a decrease of overall vulnerabilities by 20%. And while we were doing all that, we still get 600-plus help desk tickets every single month that we respond to. All right. So our FTE went up by two this year. That was the Utility System, Billing System Administrator that we brought over from municipal services, as well as the addition of the second Utility Billing System Administrator. And while we're on personnel, just to kind of put this in perspective, where we are compared to other organizations. So we are currently setting at about one IT staff member for every 45, 46 employees that we have. Surrounding agencies in the region that, that have a similar employee base to us are anywhere between mid-20s to 40 staff members per one IT staff member. So what this means is we're kind of, we're, we're operating very lean and very efficiently, which is a good thing. I like the challenge. But we are definitely sitting kind of at that minimum staffing level now. So, you know, if we, if we were asked to reduce our budget and pull down staffing, like that, that would be my biggest concern, is that we couldn't respond to the day-to-day things of 600 help desk tickets that we get every single month as quickly as all the departments need us to. But also the projects that they, they rely on us for not being able to, to complete those in as timely a manner as they need to be. All right. So going on to the budget, you'll see a, a little bit of an increase here this year. So the majority of, which is a few things. So it's those two, two new staff members that we got added. The majority of our budget is software and hardware maintenance costs. And, and just so you all know, we pay, out of our budget, the majority of the software that is used by all the other departments. I'm not saying 100% of it, but the majority of it. And every year, there's, there's increases. There's across-the-board increases to those. In the last few years, we've seen more significant increases than we've seen in the past on those. So that makes up some of the increase here. And then we added some, just some new programs, so that Utility Billing Customer Service software is in this budget. The website hosting is in this budget, as well as a new online business portal that we're working on deploying. So, so all of those things in total actually are more than the increase that you see. We've actually been able to decrease budget through some of those consolidation efforts that we've talked about earlier. We've actually been able to decrease budget through some of those consolidation efforts that we've talked about earlier. This is the first year that we've gotten to participate in CIP. So it was redefined this year to include technology projects, which is great. Um, so the first one we've got on here is our data center replacement. So this is planned for the twenty-seven, twenty-eight fiscal year. This is replacing the data center hardware that we installed back in twenty-twenty. And this is, this is just, you know, a common life cycle of hardware. And then, the next two are some both security tools that were purchased around the same time. Uh, they're, um, due for renewal. This is both hardware, software, and services for all these. They're kind of a mix of all three. And those are, are due for replacement in the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. Uh, we had two budget package requests this year. Uh, the first one's for system administrator ones. This is kind of that day-to-day, um, IT support that people may need. My computer won't boot up, printer's not working quite right, my monitor's flickering, that sort of thing. Um, this one, I believe, was, uh, put into the adopt, or the proposed budget. Um, and so really, the, the goal behind this one was just to reduce that overall response time so that we can get all of our staff members back up and running so that they're not losing productivity because their computer's not doing what it's supposed to do. And then, the second one that I don't believe was included in the, uh, proposed budget was network engineer. So this would add a second network engineer to help support the, the network that we have amongst all the buildings, do upgrades to it, and also to do new build out, build outs. So this year, one of our big ones is to do an entire IT build out in the new building that the city just purchased. So that is the end of my presentation, but I'm willing to answer any questions that you all may have.
Go ahead. So you said, you said it and I missed it because I was looking at something else.
That's okay.
Um, the, uh, the employees, number of employees increased in technology services fifteen and a quarter, sixteen and a quarter.
Yeah, there's a typo.
What was that again?
So, so we, we increased two and that, it should be sixteen and a quarter. I noticed that as I was flipping.
It says sixteen and a quarter.
Okay. It was fifteen, sorry. It should be seventeen and a quarter.
Oh.
So it was up by two. The total's right, the detail's wrong. But it was our utility billing system administrator that moved. So this was an existing employee that moved from municipal services to technology services. And then, the addition of a second utility billing system administrator, which was just recently hired.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
And then, my other question is, is, so you talked about that other, um, some of the items now are in the capital improvements plan. My question really comes is, you know, you, you never know when something's going to break.
Right.
And so what happens in, in your area when something breaks? I mean, it's expensive when something breaks, so.
Yeah.
Um, I just didn't know how that, that works.
Yeah, so, so every year, we have, we have some hardware budgeted for kind of unexpected, um, break-fix expenses, which, yes, there, there always is that, right? Uh, but the other one in there, so that data center, so that's one of our biggest line items. So the re, the reason we're putting that for replacement when we are is because that's when the hardware support ends for that data center. So we wouldn't, if, if we were to go into a year where we did not have support for that, that's where you could potentially have a very large unexpected expense. So right now, if a piece of hardware goes down in that data center, we call up our vendor, they overnight us a new part, and we're up and running again.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, good. All right, thank you. I appreciate that.
Please.
I guess I should start with, I'm probably responsible for four hundred of the six hundred calls.
I don't know about that, but.
So your team is fantastic to us, so let me just start with that. Thank you. I know that we had real problems with public being able to follow some of our meetings. And is everything done at the IUC for that room? And are we, like, ready to go forward so that will continue to be a publicly available space?
Yeah.
And as we transition our police into that building, that will still be a publicly available space for meetings?
Yeah, uh, work completed on that, uh, just a, a week or so ago. So, yeah, and I checked in with Steve not too, just, just about a week ago and he said, yep, he's, he's ready to use it, so, yep.
And we've budgeted what we're going to need to get our new building up and going, including publicly available spaces for meetings there.
Yeah, all, all of the, the IT costs were kind of planned out ahead of time before the purchase, yeah.
Great, thank you.
All right.
Anyone else? Please proceed.
So, uh, there have been, um, some issues with, uh, cities around us recently getting hacked. I guess that's the word. And I am happy, I'm, I'm going to knock on wood, that that has, that hasn't happened to us. How did those incidents, though, affect us?
Um, you know, the, the fact that they're close to hu, to home makes it feel a little bit more real. But I'll tell you, we, especially our security team, they keep an eye on that nationwide every day. So they, they see it all the time, right?
Right.
Um, so there, there is, you know, maybe an increased heightened sense of awareness just because it was close to home. But, I mean, they're, they're just as diligent as they are all the time.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else have other further questions? Okay, I've got a tough one here and I'm, and I'm actually with my fellow councilmember, Fears. Not trying to be critical or anything like this, but, uh, and to follow up on Councilmember Wiley's question. You know, the EPA just issued a warning on cyber attacks for water systems. And obviously, we have a water system and obviously, you help with the technology of that. My question is, the EPA said that seventy percent of utilities inspected over the last year violated standards meant to prevent the breaches or other intrusions. Obviously, water is extremely important to all of us and it's critical. And so, uh, this is really a, kind of a question of, I, I want to work with you and the city manager and kind of say, okay, what, what's being done to protect that? I really don't want to give a, a, a public warning to our adversaries that we are or are not, so I'm not asking that question. But.
Good move.
But the important thing is, from citizens, are we in fact looking at that and working on it? So I, I know you're working on it, that's the only question I have, but I just want to real, kind of give an alert that I think we need to talk about this and, and delve into the details of this one.
Yeah, certainly. You know, the, kind of just a, a broad picture, you know. A handful of years ago, we basically had no, no security team here. Now we've got a three-person security team. And we didn't have tools, and now we've got the tools we need. So we are, we are constantly, that team is constantly marching forward, trying to identify new threats, and then we're making adjustments accordingly. So, yeah, that we are, I, I know you didn't really ask a question, but, but hopefully, that kind of gives you what you're after.
Yeah, I mean, we just need to let citizens know that we're aware of that, we're working on it, and, uh, but I don't want to give our adversaries an invite in a public setting.
Right.
So that's my concern there.
Yeah.
Perfect, but thank you very much.
All right.
Uh, anyone else before? But again, I, I cannot say thank you enough. Every time I or Kim call, we always get, uh, right away, help us out, and I appreciate that, and I know, uh, other councilmembers have said that too, so I can't say thank you enough.
Good deal. We're happy to help.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
All right, this one is the city council and the city clerk. And Andrew, I think you're up here, is that right?
Yes.
All right. Brand new, and here we go.
Here we go. Good evening, council, mayor. I am not the city clerk. However, I am here representing her, uh, for this, uh, portion of the brief. Uh, the mission of the city clerk, uh, is to manage and record the official proceedings of the city of Independence so that official business of the city is duly recorded and maintained. Um, the action plan connection, um, the city clerk's primary connection is, uh, to the Independence Action Plan is being customer-focused with effective engagement with the community. Our updates to the records request process, I say "our" when I, when I speak like that, it's city clerk. Uh, our updates to the records request process has resulted in faster and more frequent responses to the requister and a one-stop shop for obtaining public records. And there's a few, uh, metrics there from previous months. City clerk major accomplishments. In working with all departments, we have streamlined the records request process and become more consistent when it comes to open record requests. Our current processes are more closely aligned with that of the Missouri State Sunshine Law and the Independent City Code. This continues to be a focus throughout the fiscal year and, uh, always continuing to improve that process. The city's, uh, I'm sorry, the clerk's office has tackled some big projects when it comes to converting paper records into electronic records. This creates efficiencies, obviously, when it comes to pulling up older records, uh, when it's digitized in that manner. But that's, that's a, uh, a process in and of itself, as you can imagine. Personnel, uh, two FTE. Here's, uh, a look, kind of, the bigger picture of the previous years, where the budget's at. Uh, there are packages with the city clerk regarding the new fiscal year budget. Uh, the package, the first package is city elections. There's a probability that we'll have two to three elections this upcoming FY, fiscal year. Uh, we are requesting to budget at least three hundred thousand to cover most, if not all, the cost of those elections. And in the past, they budgeted a hundred thousand, and that's about the cost for one election. It's about a hundred thousand. So to anticipate that two to three elections in the next FY, that's, this is that package to, to accommodate that. Uh, package two, uh, records request software. The city processes on an average three hundred and fifty requests of open records each month. Currently, this process is conducted in a manual way. Software, obviously, to assist, uh, staff in that process and organization, uh, will obviously build efficiencies therein. The city clerk's office has worked with the police department, uh, IT, to determine the need and value of this software, and all the departments agree. Uh, so the increase for computer equipment software was, uh, increased by fifteen thousand three hundred and maintenance services, another seventeen hundred. Package three, council devices. The city council currently uses tablets. Is that true? You guys have tablets in front of you? Uh, to view agendas during council meetings, the tablets we currently utilize are broken, some no longer work. Um, it is requested that we purchase new tablets for the city council, which bears, uh, less of a financial impact than purchasing everybody their own computer. And that, that's around thirty-nine hundred. Here's the what-if ten percent reduction, working with, uh, the city clerk. Um, we, uh, took the liberty of separating, uh, personnel costs and operations costs. So we left the personnel costs kind of over here, don't touch it, and we kind of focused on operational costs. And the operational costs are two hundred and forty-five thousand, uh, per year, ten percent. Obviously, we're looking at cutting, or trimming, rather, uh, twenty-four thousand in this what-if scenario. Again, this is just a what-if scenario. And outside of all the, the budget lines, a ten percent reduction would, would have to be captured unless you're wanting to go into eliminating personnel route. But if you're not going to go that route, the ten percent reduction would have to come in, in these other budget lines, uh, maybe that election. Those, those are huge costs. I don't know if you could push one to another FY or something of that nature. And again, this is, uh, we, you know, we took the liberty of separating personnel versus operating, so. And that's it for the, uh, city clerk portion.
Any questions? Please, go ahead.
Andrew, you may not know the answer to these, so maybe looking at Zach.
I'll do my best.
Okay, so, um, but I don't see the three hundred thousand in that budget, so, and I, what am I missing?
I believe this is reflective of last year's budget presentation. I don't think this is current for this year.
What, what we're seeing in the book?
What you're seeing right here.
What we're seeing here?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so, but, but, so then, the question for you, I guess, is do we have enough in the, in the budget for election, the elections and, and things that we're anticipating?
We have two hundred and ten thousand next year that's included in the budget. Um, we did not continue budgeting the elections as budget packages because it seems like it's an ongoing expense. Um, they were approved for one bu, budget package for ten thousand dollars. That was for, uh, document shredding.
Okay.
Next year.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. I think that's all I got on that.
You're good. Anyone else? Okay, thank you, and that'll take us to the city council, and you are already ready, so, thank you.
Here I am. All right, city council. Mission, uh, building vibrant community through service and leadership. Uh, we kind of talked about that at the, uh, that, that meeting we went to about, about a month ago, retreat. Uh, the strategic plan connection. I, the, the city council's office inherently touches all of the strategic imperatives by moving the city and agenda forward in a transparent manner. Yeah, you, you all facilitate that. Um, that's, I, how I believe you guys, uh, impact the strategic plan. Significant operational changes. You guys hired me. Uh, that's, that's great. Appreciate it. Uh, our department, uh, our two departments are obviously very slim on personnel. So these are going to go by pretty quick. Um, personnel, uh, there you go. Uh, department budget requests, let's see. Okay, so here's kind of another snapshot of the previous fiscal years with twenty-five on the horizon. Um, estimated expenditures, expenditures for FY twenty-four has increased due to the inter-funds charges having increased by, you know, thirty thousand, and, and rightfully so. And professional services have, have also increased. Proposed expenditures for the next fiscal year have increased due to, obviously, salary and fringe benefits increasing by a hundred and eight thousand. And with that, obviously, insurance and bonds are going to increase. And inter, inter-fund charges also increasing. Meeting and travel, uh, along with events and training. Here's, uh, another what-if scenario, ten percent reduction. Again, uh, same, I took the liberty of kind of separating personnel versus operation, unless the mayor wants to give up his spot or some council member. Uh, no, basically, myself and Kim and the councilmembers fall under this, uh, office or department, rather. Um, so with that, uh, separating those two, personnel and operating, the operating cost totaled to two hundred and seventy-five thousand. So ten percent of that, twenty-seven thousand, and a ten percent reduction, again, not touching personnel, uh, it would impact lines like the automobile, automobile allowance, printing and binding, events, meetings, and training, overnight travel, and other services. These are all budget lines for us. So, uh, that twenty-seven would, would filter through those lines. That's it.
Any questions?
Yes, yes, I do have a question. Um, Andrew, you and I talked this morning, or communicated this morning, um, a little bit about, um, training, memberships, things of that. Andrew, you and I talked this morning, or communicated this morning, a little bit about training, memberships, things of that nature. And, and so, you know, I'm not sure what we had in the budget previously for that. I just wanted to make sure we have what we need in the budget. If you think we do, or if you don't know, then we can, you know, I don't.
Yeah, certainly. I looked at it in great detail, and there's still a few things we need to reconcile with, between Kim and I. But other than that, it, it seemed like there was still a little bit of room for maybe a training event this, this fiscal year. But we, we still have to do a little bit of reconciling our end to give a full snapshot of that.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else have other further questions? Okay. Nothing else? Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This will bring us to Parks and Rec and Tourism.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the Council. Morris Heide, Director of Parks, Recreation, and Tourism. Like to share with you some information. Sorry, this slide is not wanting to advance here. There we go, my apologies. So a couple items, discussion points I'd like to cover this evening. One would be a little bit of information about the department, the proposed budget for next year, major accomplishments that's, that we've had this past year. Also, some major changes as we look forward to the next couple of years, and then also challenges and issues as we think about long-term budgeting. So Parks, Recreation, and Tourism, our mission statement is to provide quality leisure, recreational, and educational opportunities in clean, well-maintained facilities for visitors and residents of Independence. One of the challenges for Parks and Recreation is how we meet the needs of the community through the benefits that we offer. Those benefits can be categorized as community or individual benefits. Community benefits better the community at large regardless of whether a person uses the services or not. An example would be a trail or a park next to a home. The individual living in the home may or may not use that benefit, but they're getting the benefit because their property values increase. Services we provide are parks, natural areas, recreation facilities, and programs. From a community benefit perspective, parks and natural resources or natural areas offer the greatest benefit. From an individual basis, programs and recreation facilities offer the best benefit. This slide has a lot of information on it, but what, just wanted to share kind of the four main areas for our department. So Parks Facilities and Grounds, Recreation Services, Tourism Services, and then also we oversee the day-to-day operations, a contract for the Cable Dahmer Arena. So I won't go through all this information, but just kind of lists out all of the, the areas that we deal with on a daily basis. Next, we have our organizational chart. One thing I wanted to point out is if you look in that center column, in years past, we have shown, under Recreation Services or Recreation Area, we have shown our Recreation Facilities, Sermon Center, True Memorial Building, et cetera. This year, we've made a conscious shift to actually show our core programs as opposed to those facilities. So the facility really doesn't matter, shouldn't matter, and we've become, kind of realized that by showing that, that's the focus on the facility. Really, it's the programs, the services, the, the events that we offer that should be the focus. So you'll see that reflected in this new organizational chart. So getting into the numbers for next fiscal year, if you look at this slide, we have our actuals from the '22, '23 fiscal year. Current adopted budget, the current projected budget, and then our proposed budget is the far-right column on your screen there. At the top row, we show the full-time equivalents, FTEs, for the last, last year's actuals, the current year adopted and projected, and then the proposed budget. You'll notice that we are proposing our FTE count to decrease by 13%, and I'll speak to that here in a few moments. For General Fund, Fund Two, you see the numbers reflected there on that row. I wanted to note, under the adopted column, the second column from the left, you see a dramatic increase from $212,000 to 1.4 million. We have an asterisk there, that's, we, we took over from Parks Recreation, took, Parks Recreation and Tourism took over from Municipal Services, Facilities Maintenance in August of 2023. So shortly after the budget was adopted last year, there was a conscious shift to centralize that function. One of the challenges with our Parks Facilities, with our Recreation Facilities, Historic Sites Maintenance, a lot of the facilities-type work, maintenance work, is really housed in our department. And so it was deemed appropriate to merge that into, into one function, centralizing that for the city. Next, we have Tourism Fund, the Fund Four, so you see the numbers reflected there. We've also included CIP for the upcoming proposed budget. Recreation Levy Fund, Fund Seven. Parks Improvement Sales Tax Fund, that's Fund Twelve. We also show the CIP that's proposed for this next fiscal year. And then we have a small portion of grant funds that are made available. So overall, from '22, '23, actuals, $9.8 million, to an adopted budget of $13 million, and $12 million projected, so slightly less than that. And then a $12.115,360,000 for the proposed budget for next fiscal year, which represents a 7% reduction from current fiscal year adopted budget.
Excuse me just a second. Just proceed.
If anybody's listening online, will you explain to them what CIP means?
Capital Improvement Program, so yes, thank you. We use a lot of acronyms. We were in a Tourism Commission meeting this morning and got accused of using too many acronyms, so I apologize there. So yes, CIP is Capital Improvement Program. And that can be both in the operating budget as well as a standalone CIP, so two different areas there. So shifting gears to revenue, so similar slide, 2021 actuals, or actually, I apologize, going back to 2021, showing some actuals, so not just last, previous, current year. Up through the current adopted fiscal year this year, what we are projecting for revenue. And then again, the far-right column shows the proposed revenue we are anticipating for the next fiscal year. The Tourism Fund, just as a reminder, represents six and a half gross receipts tax. So anyone who comes to the city has a short-term stay, less than 29 days in a hotel, they're paying a 6.5% gross receipts tax on that bill, which goes to fund tourism, which is the promotion, operation, and development of tourism in the city. Recreation Levy Fund is, we receive 68% of the Health and Recreation Levy. Christina Hyne receives the other portion in, in her budget. Parks Improvement Sales Tax Fund is a quarter cent sales tax, so Stormwater and Parks are that half cent sales tax, we get a quarter of that. And the newest tax is the waterfall from the Pets and Police tax, the waterfall amount that we receive. So wanted to show here a little bit of history on fund balance, so you can look, again, going back to FY 2021, the actuals. The next to the right column is the proposed fund balance, where we would be at. As a reminder, 16% is the target that we're looking for, so we're above that on each of our funds. Talk a little bit about proposed capital improvement projects or program and the budget packages. So we had several this year. I'll go through these briefly. Rotary Park, we're proposing for $175,000 to revitalize that park. The majority of that is actually replacing the playground there and some other site amenities. Rock Creek Trail Bridge Repair. Unfortunately, we had to remove that walking bridge about, I don't know, 14, 15 months ago. A lot of erosion going along Rock Creek Trail there, so this would be funding to actually stabilize the bank, probably with some gabion baskets, some stormwater repairs there, so we can reset that pedestrian bridge back in place. We're proposing for $200,000 to purchase a trash truck. Probably six or seven years ago, the Parks Department had its own trash truck. That got to the point where it was inoperable and was not replaced at that time due to, to funding issues. We were proposing to replace or purchase a new trash truck, a 13 cubic yard trash truck. That will aid us not only in our pickup at city parks, but also we might see some other options as far as cleanups, homeless camp cleanup, that type thing would certainly help with that cleanup process. We're also proposing to add some seasonal staff. Prior to COVID, we had quite a few seasonal positions in the budget. We removed those from the budget. We found that it was just, we just didn't have a lot of folks interested in those positions. We couldn't actually get people to, to apply for those positions. We're hoping with the current job market, there would be some folks who would be interested in some part-time positions. So these would be through, from April to October, kind of our, our peak season, if you will, summertime. It would add 3.3 seasonal positions, part of those for parks, the park side, and part of that actually for recreation on our programming. The next three items, excuse me, the next three items actually all deal with the Missouri Model Railroad Museum. We would, requesting to finish, we have one repair left for the roof. We've done a couple repairs, there's one outstanding repair. Also, the water tower that is located there, we're proposing to remove that water tower. There's no historic significance that I'm aware of. The city did several studies in 2013, 2014, 2015, looking at that water tower. Back then, it was about $300,000 to restore it. It really has no value in the sense of telling a story or programming or, or that type thing, so this would be a proposal to remove that water tower. It does, at some point, it is going to pose a risk to, you know, the buildings around it, so. And then lastly, related to the Model Railroad Museum, would be relocating the caboose. We own a Missouri Pacific caboose at the Truman Depot. A lot of folks aren't even aware of that, but this would be to take that off-site, refurbish it, repaint it, restore it, and then actually move that to the Missouri Model Railroad Museum, which would be another amenity or attraction for folks who would come and visit that facility. And then lastly, we're proposing $150,000 for fundraising for the Trails Museum, trying to jumpstart some opportunities. Hopefully, hiring a firm who specializes in museum fundraising to get the seed starter, get the ball rolling as far as raising some funding for the proposed future new museum. Talk a little bit about accomplishments for this last fiscal year. We completed the first City of Independence Tourism Master Plan that was presented to City Council last October. Relocated the National Frontier Trails Museum to its temporary location. We're still stressing it's temporary at the True Memorial Building. That location opened November 1st last fall. I mentioned this earlier, but we took over citywide facilities, maintenance, operations in August of 2023. The Missouri Model Railroad Museum, excuse me, opened May 11th, some Mother's Day weekend, May 11th and May 12th, was our soft opening for that facility. We had about 400 guests go through the facility that weekend, so we're very excited about that. The eventual build-out on that is slated for hopefully September, October this fall, when they'll have the, the full display built out in the, in the large gallery space. We also completed an economic impact study for the proposed Kansas City Royals relocation. Cleaned up 64 homeless camps during 2023. We also constructed tee pads for a nine-hole disc golf course at Pioneer Ridge Middle School. This was in partnership with the Independence School District. We completed upgrades to the Palmer Center kitchen, so that included a new serving line, a new freezer, dining room tables and chairs. And we also, through this, through grant fund, funding, received a refrigerated van for our home meal delivery. Also, at the Cable Dahmer Arena, we had quite a few projects that we oversaw, so new seating for the arena. Electronic signage was installed, new sound system, so again, trying to reinvest those CID dollars, Community Improvement District dollars for the arena, back into the facility. It's not really listed in here, but next year, we will be looking at replacing the ice plant, so new ice plant, the one in place is from the opening, when it opened, and, and it's, it's time for it to be replaced. And then we're also looking at adding additional storage, so kind of an addition to the building for, for storage. And then lastly, we, and there's a photo there on the right, 75% of the streets at Woodlawn Cemetery were overlaid, which is, was a Karen DeLucci request. When I started here at the city in 2008, she asked for many, many years if we could get the street, the streets overlaid in Woodlawn Cemetery. Unfortunately, she's no longer with us, but I know that was a, a big request, one that she wanted to see happen. Action Plan Connection, so several items here. I'm just gonna kind of briefly speak to a few highlights. So under an engaged community, we really try to focus on partnerships, so a lot of entities in the community listed there. But really trying to partner on initiatives to improve the committee, community, so leveraging the dollars, the limited dollars and resources we have to improve the community that we all live on, live in. Long-term strategy to add attractions for increased tourism, Missouri Model Railroad Museum. We're working and supporting as much as possible the National Park Service for the new Harry Struman Visitor Center just north of City Hall here. That is under design currently, slated for construction in 2026. Once that is completed, we're hoping that we can repurpose the firehouse there for a fire museum. So again, a lot of attractions. The continual complaint we receive is folks don't want to come to Independence because there's nothing new. So trying to provide new attractions, new, new, new facilities that they can come and, and visit. We're performing, or going through a community center and recreation services study currently, so looking at the general obligation bond. What would that new community center look like, what would include? So that's in progress at the moment, at the moment, trying to plan for the future. We're going through an ongoing review of our operations to reduce costs and potentially downsize properties, so, and I'll speak to this in a moment. This is kind of a three-year plan that we propose at the City Manager's Office to really take a big picture, high-level view at the department, the inventory that we have, acreage that we have, et cetera, and what, what best fits for the, the footprint that we have, the financial abilities that we have to manage those resources, again, looking to the future. And then lastly, just programming and staffing improvements that go along with all of the changes that we've listed above. Major changes for the upcoming proposed budget, so we're actually proposing to reduce our staff by 8.7 FTEs. So that's about a 13% reduction in staffing, I believe. We're going to restructure the Recreation Division to emphasize programming rather than facility. If you recall on that org chart, those core programs, really trying to drill down and focus on the programs and what services we can provide to our residents and visitors. This last weekend, we opened up Adventure Oasis. This year, it was to non-residents as well as residents, that was a change from a couple years ago. And then the last major bullet point there, this, I spoke to it a moment ago, this three-year plan for new vision, for new vision for Parks and Recreation. So revised hours and programming, trying to maximize the use of our current programming space, reviewing our park property, as already mentioned. We, we need to have a discussion about long-term plan for aquatics. The Adventure Oasis Water Park opened in 2005. We have not honestly made any reinvestment in that facility. A water park, aquatics facility is, takes a lot of money and resources to, to maintain and keep relevant and add new features. So looking at that as far as long-term use for the city. We're also proposing to eliminate funding for Park Patrol. We pay about $216,000 just for staffing for Park Patrol, and we're not seeing a huge return on that investment. Unfortunately, the officers will go through, folks will leave that shouldn't be there, and they immediately come back to, to our park location, so. And financially, we're just not able to sustain that, that funding for Park Patrol, unfortunately. Again, a focus in the next three years on part-time positions for seasonal activities. And then this would be, if three years out, try to look at accreditation for the department, actually going through that accreditation process. And I might mention here, so the, the exercise about the 10% reduction, what we're proposing in our budget, we, we already included a 13% reduction in FTEs. Our overall financial bottom line is a 7% reduction, so not quite 10%, but that's what we're proposing at this point. If we need to, you know, look at another 3%, we could certainly do so. So I'd like to talk a little bit about challenges, looking ahead, next couple of years. On the right side of your screen there, this is actually a graphic from the National Recreation and Park Association. So these are their key performance metrics, if you will. In Parks and Recreation, we don't really have In Parks and Recreation, we don't really have like a standard, but these are the closest thing we have to it. So these are kind of our measuring stick, our, our guide, if you will. So when we compare ourselves to these metrics, and again, this is from Parks and Recreation Departments, Counties, Cities, et cetera, throughout the United States. Residents per park, we're about 2,460 residents versus 28, 2,386, so we're slightly higher than the average. Acres of parkland, we're about 700 acres. That was on that earlier slide. Excuse me. Acres of parkland per 1,000 residents, we're, we're at 6.5. The average is 10.6, so we're under there. Summer camps, we don't actually offer that at this point. That's something we'd like to look at in the future, but that's going to be probably a year two or year three option. Full-time equivalents per 10,000 residents, we're at 5.92 versus 8.9, which is the average. Percent of staff dedicated to operations maintenance, we're at 69% versus 46%, so quite a bit higher. Operating expenditures per capita, I just listed out there, we're, we're about 3.8 million short measuring based on the averages, and I'll talk more about that in just a moment. And then cost recovery for park funds for it, so any program or event or anything we sponsor or a part of, typically, you're looking at a cost recovery. So here's the amount of expense, here's the amount of revenue, if there is revenue, in many cases, what we offer is free. So what, what amount of revenue are we recouping to kind of offset those expenses? We're averaging about 10%. You can see there, the average nationwide is about 25%. As a reminder, the 2010 Parks and Master, Parks and Recreation Master Plan suggested 40 to 60%, which is more of a national average at that time, and also listed out 100% cost recovery for Adventure Oasis, which I find staggering to think that we would ever recover 100%, but that was the recommendation in 2010. Again, thinking in terms of all of this, it's really about those community benefits. How, how can we better the community through the services that we provide? That's kind of the lens we're looking at, we're looking through. So a little more about challenges. One, obviously, the primary one probably is finance and finances, capital improvement funding. One of the challenges we have is inter-fund charges now amount to about 9% of our budget. When we look at our whole entire budget, we only have about 23% of our budget as numbers we control. All the rest of it is already kind of, you know, determined, if you will, you know, be that work comp, risk management, utilities, charges, et cetera, et cetera. So we're really limited on kind of the, the window of the ability that we have to, to make some choices on that funding. I mentioned on the previous slide about per capita spending, so we really should be about 12,236,000, and that's just for the park, Parks and Recreation side, taking out trains at guest stacks. That's really related just to that Parks and Recreation side. And as a reminder, under the Action Plan Items 5.2B, C, and I, all of those, that action, all of those three items in the Action Plan called for increased funding to continue and expand services and programs. What we're having to go through now is actually really sharpen our pencil to look at what, what are those core programs, what can we deliver on based on the financial constraints that we have. But expanding programs is really pretty, pretty limited at this point, unfortunately, due to funding. Another big issue is homelessness and vandalism. Literally every week, we're dealing with homeless and vandalism issues. I believe the city manager is sharing with you a lot of, you know, every, every, almost every park or lots of parks throughout every week, just the continued vandalism graffiti, those challenges that we have. So again, just money to replace existing facilities and, you know, maintenance and repair, not any improvement at all, just replacing what was destroyed. Also, old outdated and repurposed facilities. I have a, a photo on the right there. That's the Independence Power Electrical Plant. That's the Sermon Center today. Again, that was built as a power plant. I thought about this, putting this together, no, none of the facilities other than the Uptown Market and the Cable Dom Arena, but when you think of a recreation or community center, none of those facilities were purpose-built. And that's really the challenge that we have. When we look at our facilities, programming, you know, your, the layout of the building, or there's a pillar here, or columns, or, you know, the size of the room, or whatever it may be. So again, those are just constraints and challenges that we have to deal with. This was mentioned in a, a budget package, but location and funding for New Frontier Trails Museum, again, that's a, that's a big kind of elephant in the room. Where, where would that go in the future? Again, we, we think in terms of the current location as simply being temporary. We don't want to convey the idea that that's a permit location at the Truman Memorial Building, again, because that was not purpose-built to be a museum. We're making that work at the moment, but long-term, that's, that's not a viable solution in our opinion. And then also the future of aquatics will have to be discussed at some future point. So I apologize, a lot of information to throw at you, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Anyone, any questions?
Go ahead. First of all, I just want to say, I appreciate the pencil sharpening and, and, you know, it's always reduc, difficult to reduce staff and yet at the same time, and, and provide the same level of services, but it appears that you're expecting you can do that, so I really appreciate that effort. That's not insignificant in any stretch of imagination. You talked about seasonal staff. What would the seasonal staff do? Just, I'm just trying to get, is that, is that like mowing and things of that nature, or is that?
Some of that, yes. So for our park, park services side, that would be, you know, seasonal staff, mowing, weed eating, string trimming, et cetera. You know, this last weekend at the cemetery, all of those 16,000 headstones had to be string trimmed around, like, takes a lot of manpower, a lot of time, so. And then for the recreation side, so we're proposing half for parks and half for recreation, they would help and assist with those more seasonal programs. I would love to have a summer camp at some point in the future, but we just don't have the staff to do that. So some seasonal staff, maybe some, you know, school district employees who have the summer off that would be, you know, love to partner with us and, you know, work some positions. I know a lot of entities do it that way, so.
Okay, that's helpful. So Councilmember McCallis and I today, we're at a Mark meeting, and, and at that meeting, they talked about universal access on, on, you know, playgrounds and things of that nature. I just was curious, because I didn't know, what, what percentage of our, you know, or what, how many, do we have, you know, universal access kind of playgrounds, and, and how many of those would we have?
Well, really, our inclusive play at McCoy Park is really our only all-encompassing, all-inclusive playground. All the others are more your traditional playground facilities, which honestly don't address that issue, so.
I thought maybe that might be the case. That's why, and, and, and the reason that I asked that question, as you look at, you know, redoing any of those playgrounds, you had one on the, on the budget, maybe that's something to take a look at, and, you know, if you can do that, the, we heard from Raymore and from Johnson County Parks, folks, and they talked that they were able to go out into the greater Kansas City community and get, you know, grants and things of that to do those kinds of efforts. So I, it was just, it was just, since you were talking about it, I thought I'd mention that, so.
Yeah, no, we'll certainly take a look at that. Thank you.
Let's see, um, I'll kind of save some of my questions for city manager, or Melissa down the road, but I did have a couple more, let me see. Oh, I was wondering, on the Palmer Center, so it says that that comes, the funding for that comes from the Parks Improvement Sales Tax.
Sales, uh.
Parks Improvement leads me to think that we're improving, I mean, that, that sounds like, more like capital improvement kind of stuff versus ongoing operations. So just help me kind of, maybe I'm understanding that wrong, and so that's who I'm asking.
That, that is the official name of the sales tax, the Parks Improvement Sales Tax Fund. So originally, that was intended to be capital investment. So originally, it, I think it staffed a four-man crew and some equipment, but the idea was to, you know, go into a park, revitalize it, improve it, add to it. And eventually, unfortunately, over time, we've had to shift more operational expenses to that sales tax and not use it kind of for those purposes. So that's just been the, the reality that we're in, unfortunately, with our lack of funding, so.
Okay.
That is the official name of the sales tax.
I was just trying to understand that part, so, okay. Sorry, um, there's a lot of pages for parks.
There are. We've actually tried to cut down on that, so we're, we're still whittling away, but.
All right, I think I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have other further questions? Please proceed.
So just for clarification, on the Parks Improvement Sales Tax, the tax was passed with the ability for operations to be included in that. You said you're rolling more and more, so it wasn't a change in what people had passed, it's that it did allow you operations, and we're finding we have to use more.
Yes, thank you for that clarification. Yeah, over time, we've had to shift more towards that side of things, but thank you for clarifying that.
I just, so the 6.5% tourism tax, that's for people who stay in the city for less than 29 days, so primarily applied to hotel rooms. What is the amount of tax that other communities, because I think tourism tax is higher in other places than in Independence. Is that true?
I don't have those numbers in front of me. It depends really on the enabling legislation. Independence, based on population, we could actually increase that by another half a percent. It would take a vote of the citizens to do that, but it could go up. The maximum is 7% based on, you know, the population constraint. So City Kansas City, other larger communities, they have, and I don't know offhand what their percent is, but a lot of that is the enabling legislation and state statute that governs that.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Anyone else? Please proceed.
I just want to clarify, because I get asked this question a lot, but the tourism tax also applies to short, short-term rentals.
It does, yes. So any, so Airbnb's, VRBO's, any short-term rentals as well as hotel stays, yeah.
They pay the same taxes as hotels.
Yes.
Anyone else have other further questions? And actually, to follow up on that question, are we, is there a way to track the short-term rentals and to make sure that we're actually receiving the revenues that are there? What's the, what's the approach on that?
Yes, certainly, the, that's more of a community development question, finance, but they, and I forget the name of the program. Sorry, it doesn't, I.
That's okay.
There was a program that the city purchased, I want to say, last July, that is being implemented that'll help track.
Rentalscapes.
Rentalscape, thank you very much. So it's actually a company that daily goes out, looks at all the advertisements and kind of mines that data, and then produces a report that cities can use to then say, you know, if a short-term rental pops up, somebody's, you know, renting out a room in their house, et cetera. So that, that's in progress, I believe.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have other further questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And since we're at 7:25, we've gone about an hour and 25 minutes, and Judge, I hate to put you on hold, but if we could just take a five-minute break with your permission?
Yes.
And.
In recess.
That would be a great, you're, you're already prepared for that, so that would be excellent. So if we could just do five minutes, and we'll come back in five minutes. Thank you.[1413.62] And, uh, next up is municipal court. And Judge, we'll put you in charge.
Hi, my name is Gary Helm. I've been the Presiding Judge of Independence Municipal Court for 32 years now, and I'm so proud of this court. You ask any attorney what the best municipal court is, and they will tell you Independence, and I would like to keep it that way. Um, which button do I put? Brought my assistant here. This is my Court Administrator, Natalie, my work wife.
Can we have that stricken from the record? I'm a little concerned right now.
Okay, that is the organizational chart. We should have 11 court clerks, but we only have seven right now. There are four vacancies. It's hard to keep staff when other departments in the City of Independence poaches our employees because they pay them more for easier job and less stress. We lost Sarah Horn, who worked with me for over 20 years in municipal court, to get another job in the city. We've lost several court clerks. It's hard to compete when they don't make enough money. Um, and it's really putting stress with all the additional work we had to do with ShowMe Courts, software that's mandated by the Supreme Court that all municipal courts across the state hate. It's less efficient. Um, but anyway, we'll get to the mission. The municipal court has jurisdiction of cases involving violation of city ordinances, establishes and collects all fines, court costs and bond money, issues warrants, subpoenas, and orders of commitment, and provide other services as prescribed by the Charter of the City of Independence, Missouri, and applicable state statutes. Our major accomplishments is trying to, is a three-case management system, COME, ENCODE, and ShowMe Courts. The ShowMe Courts freezes up, it's slow, it's inefficient, but we have to deal with it because the Supreme Court mandated it. Uh, they've launched remote access, public access, so our cases are on casenet. That is an improvement, but ENCODE could have done the same thing. If the state would have just let us keep ENCODE, they would have had an interface that done, that would do everything that ShowMe Courts does. It's created many more steps in ShowMe Courts, and are struggling to stay ahead of even the very next week's docket. Uh, we really need to get our positions filled. Oh, okay, there you go. Thank you. We have one Presiding Judge, one Municipal Judge, one Court Administrator, five Senior Court Clerks, three Court Clerks, and two Court Clerk Twos for a total of 13, but we're short, and we need to be competitive. Okay, here's our department budget request, the expenditures, the adopted budget, the estimated expenditures, and our proposed budget. Now, that's gone up because we are requesting raises to keep our court clerks and to try to lure some new court clerks into our position. Uh, the department requests $25,384 for promotion and merit increases to keep our court clerks working at Independence. I mean, it's hard to train a new one with the software and... Is that it? Okay. Um, but to me, the Police Department and Municipal Court are two of the most important departments for public safety, and we're seeing felony cases in municipal court, heroin, meth, fentanyl, tampering with motor vehicles. Uh, I remember seeing Suzanne up at the prosecutor's office. She did a great job up there in the prosecutor's office for many years before she came here to Independence, and they just can't handle the caseload up there, so we're seeing much more serious cases down here. And the degree of, uh, efficiency and accuracy is so important because you're dealing with people's life records and convictions. Um, and dealing with these people at the window is not near as pleasant. Um, and so I'd like to keep Independence the number-one court in the state of Missouri. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions? Please proceed.
I'm just trying to follow in the book here on page 226 and 227. The budget that he presented here is... Go back? Yeah. Can you go back a slide?
It doesn't have a page, one more? Okay. Oh, Department Budget Request?
Right.
So... Maybe I'm not following along here, but it looks to me like it's a different amount in our book than the $1,684,000 that's on that slide.
I don't know why it would be different.
Uh, I know the $1.7 million is the correct number. That's what I have in our budgeting software, so I'm not 100% sure where the $1.6 came from, but thank you.
Anything else? Anyone else have other questions? Okay, um, I'm going to go ahead and ask about, and you and I have talked about this, and it's just, I think it's just so important that, so my question to you is, we're down four positions. Will this proposed budget and these recommendations attract, in your opinion, people to fill those four spots?
I definitely believe so.
You think it will?
We've lost five employees recently going to different departments, whether it's IPL, codes, finance. We lost two to Grain Valley Municipal Court because other places are paying more. This is necessary to get back up to our level, and, and most of the ladies back here have worked 10, 15, 20, 25 years, and so they have a lot of vacation accrued, and so some days, we only have three court clerks. And, and it's, it's amazing that they can do as great a job as they do, but they have the experience and qualifications to do that. So, we really need, that's, the morale, the stress is really hurting my ladies.
But I know we've talked about in the past, you and I have had discussions about what do you need in the budget, and from that, I just want to make sure that this will help you fill those positions going forward. So have you, have you gotten new salary, salary ranges for these folks, or?
We have.
And so-
It doesn't take effect till July 1st with the new budget.
Right, but that was my question, is will it fix that? And I know we've talked about that and addressed that, and I wanted to make sure that we followed up on it and that you felt comfortable-
Yes.
That these were going to address the concerns that you have on making the, the court one of the best.
It is the best already.
Well, we want to keep it that way. And if I can go off-track here a second and have some license from my colleagues, Senate Bill 5 is just such a, a big impact, and I wanted to kind of get your perspective on the impact of Senate Bill 5 and how it's impacted your courts. Um, warrants, you know, if you can, take four or five minutes and go over the full impact of that on your court and the job that you have to do and the challenges that you face.
Yeah, Senate Bill 5 is a complete disaster. It's an overreaction to Ferguson.
Right.
It, uh, cuts so much of the revenue because we have to give everybody time to pay now, and they just don't pay. We can't suspend driver's license. It used to be if you don't show up for court, we could suspend your driver's license until you show up and take care of your tickets. Can't do that anymore. Uh, it's just been a nightmare with Senate Bill 5. Everything about it was wrong. It needs to go back to the way it was. I mean, if you're out of state and get a ticket, we can suspend an out-of-state driver for not paying their Independence ticket, but we can't do it to end state personal tickets. And then they also mandated, they cut our fines down to about half. I remember several, before Senate Bill 5 and before COVID, we would bring in revenues over $4 million a year. Now it's $2 million a year, cut in half. And it increases, we have to have, every single week, we have 500 people on the, at least 500 people on the unpaid fine docket, and then half them don't show up, and then we have to issue new warrants for them. And, and people realize that, you know, that a lot of them just don't have to pay their fines because we just, it's a vicious cycle. And if there's no consequences for not showing up for court, they don't show up for court, and then they don't pay their fines, and we can't put people in jail for, for not paying fines unless we have an NNC hearing and everything. So we try to work with these people, but they just don't show up. And the appearance rates are not near as good as it used to be.
What do you think the appearance rate is now for folks? When, so you've got a docket of, say, 100, how many people actually show up to address those?
If it's a good day, maybe 50%.
Okay.
Years ago, it'd be 80, 90%, because people used to be afraid of the consequences-
Right.
And be afraid of warrants and, uh, losing their license. Also, it used to be if you didn't show up the first time, it automatically went to warrant. But now, we have to send them an invitation, a summons to come back, you know, a second time, but if they didn't show up the first time, the vast majority of them don't show up after we give them another invitation. Uh, and that's, it's hurt all municipal courts. That's why the smaller municipal courts are disclosing. Um, but it's really important to fight crime and, and safety of the people here, um, because we're dealing with felonies in Independence Municipal Court as well as the other courts.
Now, do you have more control over the felonies in those scenarios?
Well, I wish we had a jail that we could put more people in jail, because Johnson County, a lot of times, these defendants have found out that if they cause a problem in Johnson County where we usually send them to jail, Johnson County won't take them anymore.
Mm-hmm.
And we only have a temporary facility here that we can only hold them for up to 72 hours because they don't have showers and, uh, a kitchen, the proper nutrition. So we, it's only a temporary holding facility. And, and people, these defendants talk, say, well, just act up, get in a fight down there in Johnson County, they'll send you back to Independence, and they got to release you. There's got to be some consequences for their actions. And I wish some of the cities would get together and build a regional jail for municipal offenders, since, you know, if you get charged with fentanyl, fentanyl should not be in Independence Municipal Court, but I had a fentanyl case this morning. The guy didn't show up, but fentanyl is deadly, and it kills people, and they should go to jail. They don't have court, I've been trying for years to get municipal offenders, at Jackson County, take municipal offenders in drug court, but they won't do it. That's only for certain court felony cases. Well, I said, well, these should be felony cases. So we don't have drug court. Um, and I usually give them meth heads and fentanyl, I give them 30 days in jail plus probation, supervised probation, drug testing and everything, and most of them fail that. And it's just a vicious cycle, and our jail cover costs keep going up each and every year. And the competition for the jails, they may not eventually take our, our prisoners. Kansas City apparently tried to work a deal with Jackson County with their new jail, which may take forever to get built, and Jackson County says, we don't want to do municipal offenders anymore. So Kansas City is going to be using these people. The feds are using courts, I mean, these jails. Pretty soon, we may not be able to send anybody to jail, and if that word gets out, public safety, I mean, what's the consequences of following the law if there's no consequences? Don't have to pay your fines, don't go to jail. Why not commit crimes?
Right. Uh, and I, this is just my perception. I want to get your, your viewpoint. I could certainly ask the chief this, but I just think because of Senate Bill 5 and the inability for us to really have teeth with our, our penalties, that people are now speeding through neighborhoods much quicker. Uh, they're going up and down Crissler, Nolan Road, Sterling much faster. I've even had people, you know, say those, those places are now speed, you know, I've had citizens contact me and say, and complain so much about that, and, and I think it's because people know that there, even if they do get caught speeding, there's really nothing we can do to them.
And if they just pay a small fine that the state has mandated that we give them, that's just the cost of them doing business and speeding.
Right.
You know, and-
And there's no points applied to that on their license either, right?
Well, no, they do get points if they show up and plead guilty or are found guilty at speeding taxes, but a lot of times, they, they end up with suspended license, they're driving without insurance. I mean, there's got to be some consequences for that, because the only people who hit me are uninsured motorists.
Mm-hmm.
And so, we need them to follow the law, and there needs to be some teeth. And so I wish they would go back to before Senate Bill 5.
It'd make your job much easier, and you could actually have some teeth in your rulings and, and, and approach it in a much more effective and professional way, is what I'm hearing you say.
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else have other questions? I know I took a long time on that one, but I think it's just so important. So, thank you, Judge, for that. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Would you have any questions for my Court Administrator?
No.
Because she knows everything.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Next up is Human Resources, and this will be the last presentation for the evening, if anyone's asking.
Move this way down. Hi, everyone. Jamie Reamsmire, HR Director. Almost done for the evening. All right, let's talk about Human Resources here. Uh, so the Human Resources Department is made up of five different departments. We reorganized the department this year to be made up of talent acquisition, benefits, strategic partnership, payroll, and operations. Within the department, we work towards a people culture model, and that's what this looks like here. It's a model that you've seen previously when we looked at the implementation of the Dayforce modules in December, when we brought that to you for approval. Essentially, it's all of those centers of excellence, what we just talked about, moving towards that strategic partnership model, and then going out to the various departments in the organization to help for that people culture, strategic partnership within the organization. Moving towards that, we move towards the mission of the organization or the department in Human Resources. We're focused on creating that positive workplace in that culture that aligns, of course, with the city's values and missions as determined by you, the council, and implemented by that executive leadership team. It's pivotal in building and shaping and reinforcing the organizational, organizations' culture by overseeing all employee-related functions. So, that's our mission. Digging a little bit to our department, significant operational changes in 2324. We focused on building stronger relationships, which is part of that people culture model that we've talked about quite significantly here, hiring the, the Director, changing that operational model structure within that department, structure that we looked at earlier, and hiring subject matter experts in a lot of our fields, right? Those strategic partners, a recruiter. We also implemented, of course, our case management system, Dayforce, and that, that, of course, is our timekeeping and payroll system, and that's been fully implemented. We're currently implementing all the rest of those modules now. We rolled out our benefits module today, and we will be communicating that to our team members tomorrow. And by the end of the week, we will also be out, rolling out our onboarding platform. That also is live, but we're going to roll that out and not inundate our employees with that communication too fast, but we're going to be talking to them about that onboarding platform as well as the recruiting module by the end of the week. And then we'll be outlining some of those other platforms throughout the rest of Q4, or I'm sorry, Q2 and Q3. So that's pretty exciting. Over the next three years, and this is just a, um, a summary of what we've talked about back in December of last year, $12.4 million in savings over the next three years with implementation of this particular platform. Thirty-nine, a little over 39,000 employee hours saved annually. Of course, streamlining profit processes and accurately getting data out there, accurately getting data input, and of course, being compliant with all FLSA standards, which is- And of course, being compliant with all FLSA standards, which is quite important. So... Looking at the personnel within the department, currently we asked for a head count of nine, had a projected head count of nine, as we'll see reflected in the finance presentation next, tomorrow, I guess. We had an administrative position that's been fluctuating between the two projected head counts for the last year's models. We asked for a requested head count of thirteen, but we're now proposing a head count of ten after we reevaluated some needs and shored up some of our costs within the, within the proposed budget. And we can talk about that here in a few minutes. For our capital outlay, we don't have any. We're all people-focused. Looking into budget packages, the only one that we have is more of a reallocation of funds, and that's in our professional services fund. This is for our EAP services, which is our employee assistance platform. We moved to a new platform this year, and those funds are reallocated to a new cost center and a new fund. And we have to bump up those service costs for next year to outline the, the resources for those funds. But we actually are reallocating those into a different fund. All of our other budget packages that we asked for, we did remove from budget, but I would like to review those with you so you can see what we asked for and what we've produced. If you recall back in December, we talked about reducing our timekeepers from forty-two to three and moving those into our payroll team. We are still planning on doing that at the beginning of the pay cycle, I'm sorry, at the beginning of the fiscal year. But what we're doing instead is we are not asking for new head count. We're reallocating the current head count we have in HR and moving a, an administrative head count from finance and asking them to come over to HR. So we're reallocating those funds and we're actually putting a supervisor from HR that we no longer need because we are shoring up a lot of those tactical role responsibilities. And we're going to move them over into the payroll module instead. So no, no head count, reallocating labor costs. So no need to have those new annual labor costs for the year. The next budget package that we had was for a benefits coordinator. We do need this role. I'm not going to lie. However, what we're looking to do instead is to utilize our brokers that help us in our, in our benefit space as well as our carriers and a lot of the resources that they have to aid us in what we need to do to service our employees in the benefit space as a cost savings to the city so that we can lean on them for a lot of the services that we can provide to the employees. And finally, we were hoping to attend a conference for the Dayforce platform so we could learn a little bit more to that, but we have also kept that out of budget. And finally, if we were looking at it as an additional budget saving as, as we talked about, no capital, nothing more than head count. So if we're looking to cut anything out of our budget, it would be personnel at this point. Speaking a little more to personnel, just in terms of what the industry standard is from, from an HR perspective. If you're looking at a ratio, typically you see two point five HR personnel for every one hundred employees. So that would be in our organization about twenty-seven and a half HR employees for the type of organization that we have. With the people culture model we have, and I personally feel that this is excessive, but the industry says it's four to one hundred. Any way we look at it, it's quite lower here at the city than what we see. And if you take the payroll individuals out of that space, it's even less, and that isn't included in the industry standard. So we're definitely doing more with less, but we're doing our best. So that is my presentation. I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Anyone, any further questions? Please proceed.
So removing your training for Dayforce. I'm just asking the rationale for that because, you know, utilization of that product is such an important aspect.
So we're not removing the training platform. We're just removing the personnel that would be administering that. So what we have is a generalist in our, on our team who will be helping to administrate some of that training. And we'll be utilizing some of the, some of the mechanisms that are out there already, LinkedIn Learning, some of those other platforms. And what we can do is we can integrate that into the Dayforce platform. That's still in the system, and that's still planning to be rolled out. It's a module that we have already, already put into the system. Yes, ma'am?
Anyone else have other further questions?
Yeah, just, so just to be, just so that I'm a hundred percent clear.
Sure.
So we, we're going from eight people to ten people according to this. One of them is somebody that was in finance before.
Correct. It's somebody who's currently in finance, actually.
Okay.
Yes.
And so what's the other one?
So the other one is actually our recruiting manager that's, that's currently employed. That person was actually in the budget at some point last year, was removed. And so we just have them back in the budget now, and that's why it's eight, actually nine.
I got you. So it should be nine. Because I saw your, your chart said nine, and I'm like...
How does that math work? That's how that math works.
That's all, that's all I needed. Thank you.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay.
The, the slide.
Oh, the Dayforce conference? That's okay, yes. Yes. And that's just for travel and, and hotel costs. Of course, the conference is free.
Thanks.
Sure. God bless you.
Anything else? No further questions? All right, thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, I would be remiss if I didn't give the opportunity to any closing comments or ideas or perspectives on anything.
We'll see you tomorrow night.
Very good. Same time, same bat channel. All right, see you tomorrow night, six o'clock.